Buffalo City Council is back from break and we're going to continue with AB 18-073, Public Safety Update. We just completed the Fire Department presentation. Now, we're on to the Police Department. Oh, sorry. I thought I was looking at the chief like, "Let's go, Chief. Let's do this."
It'll be a lot of the chief. I'm just, I'll queue it up, but the real substance, obviously, is coming from our chiefs tonight. Just wanted to give you a sense as to some of the changes that we made between the last conversation and this one in response to your feedback. Sorry, I have a lot of papers. So, in response to your feedback on April 17th, as I'd mentioned, our first cut at that Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3 that we had there was the entirety of the assessment of our needs. And as you might remember, that was $11 million and 56 positions. Based on the feedback and the priorities we heard from you, we had narrowed that down. So, and also in response to the comments that we'd received at the budget retreat. So, let me make sure I'm not missing anything. I'm just going to show you what we have in your packet and available for the discussion this evening to give you the most ways of seeing in real time what the effects of different package options would be for any sort of potential O&amp;M levy. So, so you'll notice there's an item in your packet that looks a little bit like this. I'm going to actually pull up the Excel spreadsheet. But I just wanted to walk you through, there's four pages. So, on page 1, this is our draft number 2 of Level 1 items. Everything in red that you see on all four pages are items that were in Level 1 last time. That's all it indicates. So, when we gave you that on April 17th, for transparency, you can see where they went. The Level 1 items right now, given the feedback that we received from you at the budget retreat on April 27th, if your interest in adding four additional officers in the budget for patrol, that item and the evidence tech have been removed from the levy considerations. If you'd like that to be different, you're welcome to do so. That's just what we did in reaction to your feedback. So, you won't see the four additional officers or the evidence tech. On page 4, the final page of this packet, you will see Proposed Additions to the 1920 Budget. That includes the four patrol officers that we discussed at the budget retreat. That also includes the evidence technician and the software. The other two items, Navigator and Dispatch Supervisor, are items that the chief had mentioned may have other funding sources. So, they are not currently in the levy packages for consideration. If you want to move them back, though, you're obviously welcome to do so. But I just wanted to let you know where those went. So, those are the proposed budget adds is a good place to start. So, the Public Safety Operations Level 1 items right now, the chief is going to speak in more depth about the Pro Act team for proactive policing, swing shift. And then, the others that I wanted to point out, we even continue to include the probation lead and the public safety application analyst as proposals for this core package of Level 1 priority public safety services because these are two areas we believe we are underwater. So, probation lead is handling about double the cases that they should be. And the public safety application analyst, there is a large number of systems, especially in the Fire Department, that do not have dedicated IS support right now. So, we feel that those two are both underwater and have continued to suggest that. Otherwise, it's a slimmed-down package. Last time, we were at 42 cents per thousand. Now, it's at 34. The reason for this is that we also heard your feedback at the last meeting that you wanted options presented on sort of an a la carte menu. So, if you look at Level 2, that's exactly what we have for you this evening. So, the chief will talk in more depth about the Level 1 items before we move on to Level 2. But all of the items in there are either ways of using existing resources more efficiently or they really reflect a conversation about community priorities and what you want your public safety to be that we felt would be more appropriate to hear from you. So, those are all the Level 2 items or different things that you could add in. But obviously, this is all up to you. So, if you want to move things around, that's just the way we've presented it for the evening. And so, as you go, I'm going to hand it over in a minute here to the chief as soon as you're ready to hear more about proactive policing and swing shift. But we have this, so I can add anything from Level 2 over to Level 1, and it will calculate right now what the new cost of the overall levy would be and what the cost per thousand would be as well. So, that will, that's in order to hopefully facilitate your discussion afterward on how, what your priorities are in public safety. But that's the way we had proposed setting it up for round 2.
Great. Thank you. Does there are any questions from council? They're mesmerized. Chief, did you want to discuss Level 1, Level 2?
Yes, thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity. And because we have different council members, have had different tenure, I'm going to go back and just do a little bit of a review of what I've talked about over the last several years. I've been discussing for several years now, my concerns about the decreasing ability of our police department to do proactive policing because of the increasing time that they are spending on their reactive calls. As a reminder, this is what I mean by these terms. Reactive patrol are activities performed at the request of a resident if it's a, if an officer comes across an incident that requires an immediate response. Examples of that would be 911 calls into our center or maybe an officer has a DUI arrest that they're making. Proactive policing is the self-initiated activity by officers, business checks, traffic stops, following up on crime trends, community outreach and education. What we're finding is the time to investigate and handle the reactive calls for service are taking up more and more of the officer's time. And as a result, a call that could have taken a couple hours 10 years ago is now taking double, triple, or even more than that. So, is that the slide? For one slide, you can see on this slide, this is the number of hours officers have spent on calls since 2012 to 2017. And this shows the impact of the complexity of these calls for service. It breaks down the number of hours spent on reactive calls, which is the blue versus the red proactive calls. And what you really need to understand about this is up until 2017, we weren't able to track the amount of hours officers were spending on follow-ups. So, the reactive, excuse me, the, yes, the reactive calls is only reflecting the initial call. So, for example, they might be, get called to a burglary and they'll do their initial case and talking to the homeowner. But if there's any follow-up to that, like maybe they have to go back out to talk to the neighbors, maybe, you know, the next day, follow-up on some evidence, that's not captured. So, we know that that blue line is actually steeper than it is. So, the reason, the one good thing about this is we are not unique. This is happening to police departments across our region. And there's really three reasons for it. There's legislative changes, there's judicial changes, and there's societal changes. And what I mean by legislative changes, the legislature oftentimes recognizes an issue and passes new laws and requirements to address that. Examples recently, orders to surrender weapons or the extreme risk protection orders. You may be hearing about that. That's a new thing that police departments are being asked to do. Training requirements, there was a legislative change to require all police officers to have a certain amount of crisis intervention training each year. CIT is what it's called. You might have heard that. There's a new change that requires for people that have been convicted of certain crimes, they have to provide swabs, DNA swabs. And the law says it shall be done by the local police or sheriff in that area. So, a lot of these are really good ideas, but they're unfunded mandates and it kind of takes up time. For the judicial changes, I've mentioned when a judge or when there's a ruling that changes how police do business. And what we've really seen recently in the last, you know, 10 years or so is a increasing requirement for the amount of search warrants that we have to get. DUIs, for example, if now, when we do a DUI, we have to handle the driver, you know, process the driver, we also now have to get another officer frequently come to the scene to manage the car, to call the tow truck, to get the car towed to the precinct, to then get, have somebody write a warrant, to then get the warrant approved by a judge, and then serve the warrant. So, something that would have taken maybe a couple hours 10 years ago, now it could be six, eight hours, sometimes even into the next day, depending on where this arrest took place in an officer's schedule. So, there's also the proliferation of electronic devices. You know, it wasn't too long ago that nobody had, or very few people had smartphones. Now, it's a rare crime that we go out and go out on, that we don't have to manage some sort of computer, you know, a laptop or a tablet or a smartphone. We can't touch those without getting a search warrant. And so, that again, has increased the amount of time. You still have the same incident. We've got the same, counting one incident, one DUI or one burglary, but the amount of time to complete it has stretched out considerably. And oftentimes, the number of officers to manage it has increased. So, the final change with this that we've seen in the last 10 years is the societal changes. This isn't news to any of you, I'm sure, with the challenges that the drug crisis, the homeless issues, the behavioral crisis, mental health, oftentimes kind of a mixture within that has caused. The calls for people in a behavioral health crisis are very important, and I think we're really improving our outreach on it. But those calls take time and they take follow-up. We've had the conversation about our Navigator, which is a great program, but that requires an officer to go out with her. Drugs alone have caused an increase in our calls for service. I mean, many of my officers have said that of the people they arrest for property crimes, they believe 80 to 85% have addiction issues. The, and that's been a pretty consistent number. It's also been a consistent number when I was talking to our probation officer. So, you can see the increase in crimes, and these are again, reactive calls that we're going out to. They're tied to drug use. I've shown you that slide before that shows property crimes increasing. You know, you've got mail theft, you've got car prowls, you know, you've got auto thefts. But you also have new crimes that have come onto the playing field here. It hasn't been that long ago that most people went to the store and bought items. And now, there's been this sea change in how much people are buying items off of the Internet. Well, the packages come to their house and you've got now a surge in package thieves hitting the areas and mail thieves. Used to be, you get one stolen credit card and you process that. Now, they are doing, they've got a stolen credit card, and with that stolen credit card, they are now buying 75 to 100 gift cards. Same one incident, but a tremendous increase in the amount of work. Child pornography is another sad but glaring issue. When I first started, there was certainly child pornography out there, but it was generally hard copy, you know, magazines, photographs. Now, it's oftentimes electronic. So, depending on, in the, in the old days, you'd get a search warrant to search somebody's house for child pornography. And some of this is really horrific stuff. Now, you can have three or four search warrants required just for one photograph, depending on what the, what the Internet site was, what the, how they're sharing it, what the, what the platform is that they're using. It's, it's a tremendous increase. So, you're seeing the picture as far as the stretching into the reactive time. And finally, there's the training piece. And this is a training piece, as our society changes, we have to evolve with it. So, active shooter training, for example, the best practices, that's changing as we're learning from these, of these incidents that are crossing the nation. It's up to us to then provide that training to make sure that our officers are handling these things in the best way that we know how. Implicit bias is another thing that we're recognizing the importance of providing for our officers. And the drug issue with Narcan, you know, we now have all of our officers trained with Narcan, but that's, that's another training requirement. You've got de-escalation techniques. You hear a lot about that. Again, the obligation is to provide training. These are all good ideas, but it takes that time away. So, for the next, next slide, so with the, we knew that this was a problem. And so, several years ago, to confirm this, we hired ETOCO to come in and do an efficiency study, and we've provided that for you. And that efficiency study confirmed what we knew. Again, that growing trend of calls for service for reactive going up and the ability to spend time on that important proactive work going down. What that slide shows, when we did the analysis after the ETOCO study and we realized we were not capturing that follow-up piece, we figured out a way how to, we managed to develop a way to capture that time. And so, since 2017, you can now see the hours going up on our reactive time, and it's just going to continue. But that's a fairly, that's a fairly sobering slide for me. So, so why is this important? Proactive work is a critically important piece of law enforcement in a community. It gives officers the time to work the areas where public safety issues are occurring. And what I mean by that is, let's give an example. You might have several accidents occurring in an intersection. Maybe we do the evaluation that that's caused by speeding. We don't want to just be reactive and continue to go to those intersections and take those accidents. We want to be proactive and get officers out there and address this speeding issue. Areas of frequent drug dealing. You get neighborhoods calling about, you know, the problem with, I think my neighbor, you know, he's dealing drugs in front of the house all the time. We should be out there proactively addressing that. Community outreach is another important part of proactive policing. We have a really good relationship with our community. It's one that I treasure and I, we've done that in part because we have made a commitment to outreach, creating those opportunities for positive interaction. And our, our residents want to have that interaction, too. We get a lot of requests for being present in school zones and talking to the kids when they're coming to school, you know, to be able to build that relationship that's so important. We attend community meetings. I've seen almost every one of you at Coffee at the Cop, which is very positive, but that takes time. And our capacity to do so is shrinking. So, what I recommend to be able to address this kind of critical need for Pro Act policing are two things. And the first is swing shift. Again, tying to the ETOCO study, our police department operates with two 12-hour shifts and runs 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Our minimum staffing is four officers and a sergeant for six districts. And as I discussed last time, we are regularly running below minimum staffing. We have 12-hour shifts because that is without any question the most efficient way of managing the number of officers we have. And again, the ETOCO study, we asked them to look at other staffing models and it was determined that the 12-hour shift is, is the best. But what we've known is that when we staff like that, we are staffed the same across both, across the 24-hour period. We don't have any staffing increases for when the majority of our calls for service are coming in. One of the recommendations of the ETOCO study is one that we had tossed around for years, which is the implementation of a power shift or what we call a swing shift. A swing shift is, provides us with the ability to add more officers in when the majority of calls are coming. It's similar to a restaurant. You go to a restaurant during lunch hour and dinnertime, and you're going to see more staff there. Same thing for police officers on the street. We, you want to pull the next slide up? There you go. Here's three years of dispatch incidents by hour. And you see, they're almost identical. You can, we know historically when our calls for service are coming in. And so, the idea for a swing shift is that you bring in another shift to cover the times when the calls are coming in, when people are out. You know, you, you see this pattern because the height, that's when people are, you know, coming to and fro work, kids are getting out of school, people are headed to the store, to restaurants, they're using the parks. That's also when you've got more people out, where you're getting into accidents, where they come home and they find that their car's been prowled, where there's more activity and more calls. So, the other issue with the swing shift, which I have not talked much about, is the increased risk to officers with not having that additional number of officers out there to be able to provide the necessary backup for some of the more dangerous calls that they go out on. When we're at minimum staffing and they're working 12-hour shifts flat and you don't have that additional bodies to be able to handle the increased calls, that's a problem. The other issue is for our residents, we regularly during that peak time have six or seven calls holding. You know, somebody's called in, they need a police officer, and they just have to wait. And if you have a hot call come in, they're going to wait any longer because we're rerouting officers to go to the hot call. It also takes longer to clear accidents off the street, which is impacting the flow of traffic in our community. So, what would a swing shift do? So, this would give the police department the ability to be more responsive to our residents. It would cause less time for waiting for calls for service. And a more police, more proactive police work, as the ETOCO study confirmed, would do a number of things. It would allow officers to follow up on trends in their district. So, again, when I was talking about the drug dealing where it's sprouting up, hitting that. Let's say you've got, a lot of times, you'll have one area where you get a lot of graffiti, which is really frustrating to our neighbors. You know, you get out and you see your fence painted one more time. To be able to have more district officers doing more area patrols than that, rather than going call to call to call. Traffic enforcement and response would also increase. At a time when there's more calls on the roadway, you'd have more officers on the street, and this means that they're going to have quicker response to things like accidents, clearing the roadways. And they also have more time to conduct routine traffic enforcement. It's frustrating to our residents when they say, you know, at 3 o'clock, this white car comes through speeding every single day, and we should be there. Our district car should be able to be out there and managing those type of incidents. And that would also help increase our school zone presence. So, when I talked about societal needs, and I go back to the response to helping those that are in a behavioral crisis, those that are suffering from homelessness, connecting people with those services and provide a longer-term solution rather than the jail route is something that we all know is best practice. By having enough officers out there to be able to do that follow-up, to be able to work with our Navigator, we're hoping to be able to take those reactive calls where you have that chronic shoplifter with mental health issues that we keep responding to, get that person into treatment and resolve the issue once and for all. That's both the right thing to do and it's also the strategic thing to do for, for efficient law enforcement. And finally, it increases officer safety by having enough officers out there to back up on these calls. We did try swing shift for about a year, as most of you know. We based it on the ETOCO study and we, we tried to implement it. There were a lot of benefits that we knew we were going to see, but we had to, we had to stop the attempt because we simply did not have the number of officers to maintain it. We continually ran short on both ends of the shift, and it really was an officer safety issue and a cost issue with the overtime. So, for those two reasons, we had to back away from it. So, that's swing shift. Do I have any question? Do you have any questions on that, or would you like me just to go right into Pro Act?
Councilor Olson.
So, how does the swing shift, does it overlap with the, the two shifts?
Yes.
In like a 12-hour period, or are they?
It's a, the one we were using was a 12-hour. We did look at whether or not you could do a 410 to be able to, but we were using a 12-hour, and it overlaps in the middle. You've got the, there's a number of strategies on whether you do 9 to 9 or you do it 11 to 11. You know, you've maybe allowed to go a little bit further in the nighttime because that's when we tend to get some of the more serious calls, so.
Okay, that was one of my questions, was just how it fit in with the other shifts.
Right. So, okay, go on. So, that's swing shift, and that's the operational side. But these, that's referring to officers who are in a district, handling 911 calls, and then in their, when they have that proactive time, going out and focusing on, you know, the areas, the issues that they know that are applying, are happening in their district. But responding to crime is an essential component of law enforcement, but smart law enforcement also tries to prevent crime from occurring. That's, that's a baseline. And currently, our officers are all tied to districts. But, you know, as you would know, crime is not. So, a Pro Act team, it's called a proactive response team or Pro Act team. Some departments call it a SET team. They're not assigned or confined to a patrol district. They're not confined to 911 response, and they are not restricted to jurisdictional boundaries. So, this small team, they can be used to focus on recognized problems, like for example, a neighborhood drug house, where you know there's a lot of criminal activity coming, a lot of people coming from outside the city, coming into the city. Neighbors are frustrated with good reason. That requires a kind of a multifaceted focused response that an officer who's regularly getting pulled off by 911 calls simply cannot do. If you have a burglary in your house, odds are really good that that burglary suspect, that's not the only house they've burglarized. So, if you've got a pattern of a crime, like burglary or car prow crimes, you need to be able to, okay, you need to be able to move that along. You need to be able to identify who the suspects are so you can resolve that issue. And I'll give you one quick, I know that, I just get so excited about this stuff. But let me give you one, let me give you one good example of what I mean by that. We had, you see, it's almost like a fingerprint for crimes. We had a series of burglaries where people, the suspects were stealing cars, using the cars to ram gun shops and pot shops and then stealing from them. And it was, there were several in Bothell and several in cities throughout the Sound. They, in one, one burglary alone, they got 72 guns. So, you know, we were working on it, other agencies were working on it. One of the agency's Pro Act teams were able to put the surveillance on the people they thought were doing it, were able to identify them. They made the arrest, and since then, those, that fingerprint has stopped. Unfortunately, the consequence has continued because the crimes have been occurring with the guns that were stolen. So, that continues on. But at least we stopped the, the flow. So, anyway, the Pro Act team can be used for traffic issues, they can be used for school-related issues, they can be in plain clothes or uniform. They're really, a really, really effective tool. And they're used for the crimes that are too complex or involve for patrol officers. So, that's Pro Act. And I would say, if you took a poll over across the street, they, they say we need to have patrol officers, but that would be absolutely the very next most important thing that we could do to increase the effectiveness of our police department. Are there any questions on that?
Councilor McCall.
Thank you. So, if you have a swing shift that comes in, how many officers are on that swing shift?
So, we're asking for six officers. That would be three officers per, we've got two shifts, so it would be two squads, excuse me, so it'd be three and three.
Councilor McCall, or McNeil, sorry.
And does the, the total dollar figure also include the vehicles?
The first year, I believe it does.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
It does, and I forgot to show you, but I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to our support departments to public safety. So I will be giving, I think we're thinking in the next probably two weeks, with your direction, additional operations, I will present back to you a report of everything that's included. But I just wanted to give you a little peek as to the background data behind the numbers that you see in the summary sheet. So we have included all of these things. So this is the background data for your Pro Act team. So it includes each of the officers, it includes their equipment, it includes asset replacement, their vehicles, everything. So I'm happy to, this is one reason we've been trying to be very mindful about how much information is behind this, to make sure that we're just presenting what you need at the time. But I just wanted to give a quick shout-out especially to Ted in finance and his team for doing some great work on this.
Just real quick, what's an attractive equipment? Sounds pretty neat.
That's just a finance term for things that might walk away, that you need to track, that don't rise to the level of capital, but.
Then you put a chain on and drill it to the wall?
Guns, and what police be guns.
Oh, okay. Great.
And every item you have has this amount of work behind it, so.
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks for showing us that, though.
Sure.
Would you guys like copies of this? Get some different quotes?
Back to the easier one.
There we go, that's more like it. So is that the end of your presentations?
Well, then, you've got the à la carte menu. So that would include community engagement and public outreach, the navigator program, the canine tracking dog, school security, administrative assistant. So is there any, I'd be happy to, if you're interested in any conversation about any of those areas, I'm happy to have that.
Deputy Mayor.
So do I assume that the ones in red are higher priority?
That's a great question. So the ones in red were just the way that I marked, the ones that I showed you in April as Level 1. So if you wanted to track what was in Level 1 in April, there had been a request at the meeting to get a summary so that you could see it. I thought instead of including a whole separate sheet on here's what I showed you in April and what I showed you in May, it might just be easier to show that.
So those are the ones that we asked to be removed from Level 1?
No, they were, they were in Level 1 in April. And then, based on your feedback at the budget retreat, and then your expression of priorities that you had said during the April meeting, we reconfigured them. So the red is just there to show for transparency exactly what items have been included in the original April estimate.
Okay. And then, school resource officers, three versus school outreach and safety officer. Do I assume that those are interchangeable, not requesting both?
So what we've done with a lot of the items that you're seeing was hear what you had said during the retreat, and then look at what options we could think of as far as meeting those needs. We heard school security was a significant concern for everybody. And so we're providing two things, and it could be an, or, or neither. The school resource officers, to be able, we used to have a very robust ones, and we had them in all the schools, including an elementary school liaison. And then that's gradually been shrunk back, shrunk back to just the high school SRO. So if we wanted to put an SRO in our middle schools, that would require three additional officers. That's kind of the traditional SRO. The, going, talking to other areas, other states, there's an interesting program and that, in talking to some people in the school district too, which is taking a more of a scalpel approach. So rather than having an officer in the school every day, you have one officer that we, I would envision working closely with our navigator, that goes out as a, kind of a school youth outreach officer, and works directly with the students that are exhibiting troubling behavior, maybe potential safety threats. They can be the students that are marginalized by homelessness, maybe they have, they've got family members struggling with addiction issues. It's focused on early intervention to help the child before an incident occurs. And so that's kind of a new way of looking at it.
Well, I appreciate that one, the one, school outreach and safety officer. I did have a conversation with a school board member about the need, because my children say, oh, we don't need anything like that in our middle school. Somehow I think they're not seeing what you're seeing. But I, when I spoke to a school board member, they said, one that kind of traveled would be fabulous. They didn't think that we necessarily needed three. So I guess that would be the input that I've received. And it certainly makes a lot of sense to me, given what's been happening recently. So I appreciate that item, and I would like to see that move up to Level 1.
Yeah, just a couple broad questions here. So the Pro Act team, are those mostly mid-to-senior level officers that would make up that team, or?
They would be, they would not be junior officers. We would generally have a standard. I think we would set three years on, so you have some street time.
Okay. And then, maybe not for you, or maybe more Tori, is the first year kind of front-loaded with training and equipment purchase, and then it kind of drops off after?
It is, yeah. And the city manager and I had been discussing a little bit earlier, you know, there may be some ways of leveling out the impact between the two years, so that's something we could also look at. This is just straight across the first-year cost and the second-year cost, assuming that everything comes on in 19. But especially with the time to hire, there could be a way of leveling out those costs. So there isn't such a big jump.
I would say that's probably very, very likely, just the time it takes to hire an officer and train them, and the capacity that we would be doing that staggered out over several years.
Thank you.
Councilor McCall.
Thank you. So I really like the idea that you are looking at kind of the school resource officer with the navigator being more proactive. I think that's really important, because I think when we look at kids in schools, I was a school nurse for many years as well, we can see the kids that are struggling. And that's the ones you want to point out and have them have some time with that child. The other one that I am interested in is your community engagement coordinator. And I don't know, I'm sorry, can't see that far away, but you don't know where it is.
Yeah, so the community engagement and public outreach coordinator. So social media, last five-plus years, that's how people get their news. That's, people expect, are expecting feedback to occur in a very timely manner. And we understand that importance, too. I mean, you, I saved myself a heck of a lot of time in Seattle the other day because they had a tweet go out about this road closures down there. We need to expand that capacity, and right now, we are doing it just by our current resources. And there's many, many different areas that we should be reaching out to that we have not been able to, just because of capacity. But it's not just social media, it's also the outreach into our communities. So we're talking crime prevention. We're talking having somebody that can go out to our neighborhoods and organize block watches, being able to go out to our senior centers and doing the kind of outreach and talks that they're asking us for. And it's our business communities, too, that we need to have a stronger partnership so that when we see trends in criminal issues, a few years ago, we had one with some car, they were going into our car sales lots and stealing cars. We found that out from another agency, so we needed to do that outreach to our business community so they could protect themselves before that happened. So it's both social media, it's virtual, and it's actual. We've had a lot of requests for citizens academies. We should be providing that to our community, but it takes a coordinator to do that.
And is that coordinator now included in this budget?
That's in the à la carte menu, so if you would like to have that considered, it's...
Yeah, I'm sorry, can't read that far away.
Sure, it's the first item. They're on the Level 2 options.
Oh, okay. Well, I think it's a really important function, so I would like to see it come forward, but it's, if anybody else feels that way, then we'll look at it.
Okay.
Sorry, we're arguing over here about how many middle schools there are in the city. There's two?
Three.
There's three. Where's the third one?
Down in our newly annexed area.
See, she's always right.
North Shore.
Didn't matter, your kid went there. So I like Level 1. Councilor Agnew, would you like to go first? Go, okay. I like Level 1, and then if we have time to try to discuss, I mean, I understand a school board member weighed in about the school resource officer, and three is, are just one, is sufficient, we have it down for three, and Level 2, do you have any input on that? There any feedback on that?
So we have, yeah, we have two options. We have the traditional, put a school resource officer, one per middle school, that would be three officers. And then the, it should have, we probably should have put or. The other option is that more scalpel attempt to reach out to individual students so that that officer would go school to school as the need arises, and there'd be a greater capacity because they wouldn't be spending their days in the school, in one particular school.
So I like the idea that, in addition to Level 1, that's what I'd like to see go out to the public to decide on.
Okay.
Councilor Agnew.
Well, I'd like to Level 1, but you said that you can mix and match here a little bit?
Absolutely, that, and all of this is up to you, so.
I like the Level 1, but I'd like to switch the swing shift officers with, and add 8:45 to it, add the navigator and the school resource officer. And I hate to say that, sitting right next to the police chief.
Please, just clarifying.
No, what I wanted to do was, I wanted to do a mix and match and just see where that would put us on Level 1 by just changing a few things.
So do you just have one, three school resource officer, or do you have three?
I have one.
Okay, gotcha.
So can you do that on the fly, really? This'll be fun.
Okay, so just to confirm, it was one school outreach and safety officer, striking swing shift, and bringing in the full-time aid car at 45.
And the navigator.
And the navigator, okay. Okay, let's see if my system actually works. Cut. Thankfully, I've saved a copy of this, so if it doesn't, there we go.
Very brave of you to do this in a live meeting.
Brave or stupid, we're going to find out.
We'll find out.
And then we'll see if I've got that. Okay, does that now include everything? School outreach, safety officer, navigator, full-time aid car, no swings?
Thank you.
Okay, and then let me just check the formula. Seven through 13, seven through 13, voila.
There we go. So just for, we had a clarifying question over here, I was asking, so on the last page of this packet you gave us, there's the list of four things that I think you said are basically going to be in the budget period, because of our direction.
So this was some discussion that we had, as to what to do with items that we had heard support for in the budget, and the direction that we went here was to put them separately. So if you would like those, like the navigator, to be included back in the levy, we could certainly do that, too. They're just shown separately because of the support or alternate funding sources.
All right, so we're like, no matter what, we already gave direction as a council? Well, I guess we didn't really publicly, no.
Well, you did publicly, the discussion was public, but I haven't looked, I haven't seen the revenues yet for 2019, 2020. So I don't know if the list that you gave us, the goal setting a couple weeks ago, your direction was almost $1 million of ads, and I don't know if there's revenue to do that. So I wouldn't say it's 100%, but I would say that that's what you directed us to put in, and so what we'll be coming back with is a budget that tries to include these things and potentially would also offer some cuts to be able to afford what you've asked us to put in.
So what we're, so what we should probably be doing is saying, okay, those are the four things we said that we wanted in the budget period. Level 1 is in addition to that?
Correct.
Okay.
So we took out, so that's why they're in red. These were the things that we had in Level 1, the bronze package that Tori presented to you in April. When we had the goal setting a couple Fridays ago, you said those were so important, you wanted to see them in the budget. Regardless of what happens with the levy, you wanted to fund these four items. And that's what we're trying to do, is we put the 2019-20 budget together for you. So we've pulled them out of the levy and have reworked this Level 1 package with what we think are sort of the dire basics, and then giving you this à la carte to shift it around and decide what your priorities are.
So when I say I support Level 1, that's including everything on the last page, which is the navigator, four patrol officers, dispatch supervisor, and evidence technician. And then in addition to that, it's all of these other things.
You're saying you support those, not in the levy, but you support those as part of a funding package for the budget?
All right, so it'd be seven FTEs, and if I said I want everything on Level 1, it'd be seven plus 14 FTEs?
Not in the levy.
But not in the levy. But at the end of the day, like in 19, that's how many?
If the levy passes, correct.
Okay. Hmm, all right, I need to laugh for a second. Deputy Mayor.
Can you explain the difference? I mean, I know the difference. Can you explain the different values between the swing shift officers, I know there are six, versus the four patrol officers that we put in the, on our wish list for the budget?
So we are seriously understaffed, and it is a pretty critical issue. We are using overtime at a huge rate, and it's getting harder and harder to get officers to come in, and I don't blame them. I think I showed you the example on just, in April, how many shifts we are below minimum staffing. And when we're talking about a city, our size, our minimum staffing being four officers, and we're below that, and we're not always getting people in, it's a problem. So for example, Ken, do you want to tell, explain the, when you pulled the, this is our overtime cost for January through May, and is that the total cost? Is there a number of officers that we've called in on overtime?
Yeah, those are the number of bodies that we've had to fill. So we're at 92 spots we've had to fill since January. And averaging our cost in that with the wage, low-end, high-end senior officers, we average that out to be about $69 an hour roughly, which comes up to about $40,675 since January that we've spent on overtime just to maintain minimum staffing.
And that's just, that's for our two squads. So when I came into the retreat, I said that is, that, before we can do anything, I mean, if you gave me a Pro Act team right now, I'd have to pull them out and have them go to patrol. So that's just the baseline. To be able to manage our calls for service during the, during the hours that we have the most calls, that's where the swing shift comes in, and most departments have that. It just makes total sense to do that. But we have to, we have to, we have to start with our squads and then be able to staff up, and we are just not there. And that goes back to why, you know, the reactive time, the amount of time officers are on calls, and then the other issues.
Chief Kuhn, with the suggestion by Councilmember Agnew, that's nine new bodies. What would the effective impact be of adding an aid car to Station 45?
Well, that station's definitely picking up calls. I know it would help us out on freeway responses. We've started adding more vehicles because of the safety issues on the freeways. If we get a freeway call right now, we essentially empty the city out. If we get a freeway call right now, we essentially empty the city out of, of units. That would allow us to keep at least one unit in service in the city if we had a, a major freeway event. We, um, we have the ability to keep our engines in service longer for fire, so if we have an aid car go out, typically, right now, they take the aid car or the engine, but when they do that, they can't take the engine. The engine's stuck. So having an aid car enables, uh, Station Forty-Five and probably more, and help Forty-four as well to keep those engines in service available for other calls, fire calls. And then there's a kind of a, um, I don't know, bonus, but revenue or, um, cost offsetting by, uh, transport fees we would charge. So we would make, um, some money back on that unit by having that available to do transports.
Do you like, um, like, uh, police have, uh, peak times where it's busier?
Yes, definitely.
So would we have to hire nine new people or could we hire one new shift or something like that?
Those are options. The, the aid cars is, I'll admit, is the easiest way to get that on the books, to get that going, but there are other ways to do that. Peak time units, um, you can do twelve-hour units, um, that kind of thing, but there, we definitely do have peak times as well.
I'm, I'm trying to split the baby.
I'll get you.
So that we could effectively perhaps do a, uh, peak time shift and not hire nine new people for that aid car?
It's possible. I'd have to look in the numbers. Um, then, um, then you get into my world with twenty-four hour shifts versus a twelve-hour shift and getting people to commit to that. So it becomes a little, uh, little nuance on that end, but, um, I'm not opposed to looking at that at all.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I'd be interested. I'm, I'm really interested in having this wing shift for the police. Um, and I totally understand, um, you know, wanting additional aid, but, um, we have to draw the line somewhere.
Councilmember Zorn?
A couple questions, if I can put you on the spot. Like, how critical, uh, is it to have a community engagement coordinator?
So, you know, as I've mentioned before, we've got to increase our operation staff, the patrol, patrol operations. That's the critical need. Um, the, we have a certain level of social media outreach right now that we're able to do. Many of you follow us on Twitter, so we'd be, we're able to maintain that and we're coming up with some ideas on little bits of growth, so we're, we're doing, we're static right now.
Okay.
We don't have the capacity to do, uh, much neighborhood outreach, but that's what I'm looking between, uh, having enough officers to be able to safely manage, um, a significant drug arrest or, uh, have enough officers to go to a domestic violence incident and have backup. That's the priority. So it's a really good, nice to have. It's not a critical need.
Okay. And then also, traffic officer. Is that a critical need or is that more of a?
So with swing shift, you have more officers out, uh, on the street. And right now, what we're doing is we're regularly pulling our traffic officers back to, to manage patrol because we're so short. So with the swing shift, we will have more officers in the districts in this, on the street, increasing traffic enforcement and the ability to respond to neighborhood traffic issues. In addition, we won't be having to pull our traffic unit from traffic to work patrol in as frequently as we're doing. So you're getting an increase in traffic enforcement with swing shift.
Okay. So I, 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 I sit here and I think about our finance director, Tammy, what would she say? And, and as we're going through this, it's resonating through my head. As if we look at both pa- both packages together, if I'm understanding this correctly, as they stand now, both packages together, the estimated, uh, tax is three hundred and sixty dollars? For all those items?
Yeah, the third chart is to show you what they would all look like together. So the revisions now, what we presented to you is about seven point nine overall, which is down from the eleven that we showed you as the overall needs in the city. So that's the total cost for everything.
Okay, so in, in my humble opinion, that's a huge bang for your buck for pu- public safety, for, for safety, when we, when you think about security in our neighborhoods and in our businesses and, and our community at large. That's a huge bang for your buck. And so when I, I feel that said, when I look at, well, may, um, maybe we could live without, um, the school resource officers, maybe we could live without the community engagement coordinator, and maybe we could live without the traffic advise- officer. It feels a little petty, like I'm nickel and diming out of the big picture. But everything there just spells a very comprehensive, uh, way of just bolstering what our police can, and our fire can do for our community. So, um, if I had to cut, it would be those three things, but the, otherwise, I am, I'm, I, you got my full support on all those items up there. That's my input.
Councilwoman Olson? I can tell you got something to say. You gotta use the mic, though.
It's a tough one. So yeah, so I agree, you know, I think we get good return for the, the school outreach and safety officer. Chief, how would you balance between the community engagement coordinator and the full-time administrative assistant? Because I really like, you know, the delegation and get it, keeping police officers doing police work and if you can have someone assisting with non-police work. I think that's always crucial.
That's why we used a civilian for that position, for, obviously, the administrative assistant position. When you add, uh, bodies, you have an increase in administrative, uh, tasks that need to be done. And you're, you're, it's smarter to use people that are trained for that rather than the more high-priced police officers to fill that in. We can, we can manage. Eventually, it's going to reach a point that we're gonna have to increase. We only, we have our, we have two divisions that have no administrative support right now. The community engagement coordinator, again, um, we are, we have a certain level of social media outreach and we're gonna continue with that, but we're not gonna be able to expand it. And so, um, I think we're meeting a certain need. It's not the, it's not the deluxe model, but it's, it's covering the, the basics.
All right, so I, I would say I would stick with our level one and then I would go the full-time administrative assistant and the so-so officer. I think those are the biggest bang for the buck that I'm seeing out of the level two package.
Councilmember McNeil?
Tori, can you tell me on the orig- the, uh, fire, the, uh, capital projects, what the total was on that?
The original?
Yeah.
Seven, I-
Thirty-five, wasn't it thirty-five million or something with both, both, we did both forty-two and forty-five?
For tonight? Oh, that was twenty, uh, thirty.
I got thirty-six, five.
Yeah.
Thirty-six, five?
Yeah.
So, so can somebody tell me real quickly what that would be, uh, on a five hundred thousand dollar house?
I believe Ted can do that.
No pressure, Ted.
So in a perfect world, um, public safety, single most important thing we can do for our community is make sure that we keep each other, keep, keep, keep our community safe. However, I'm, I'm looking, you know, if I go to the wish list, I would come to the back page, the third one, and say three hundred and sixty dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar house, I'm all in. However, combined with the fire, capital projects, that's a heavy lift for some people within our community, especially seniors. So, um, I know we want to put something out that's gonna benefit our community, it's gonna pass, that we're not gonna have to come back. And I, I might not ha- I, I don't have the answers for that, but I can, I can go through this list. I could tell you what I, what I think would be important, what I've heard from the community. And level one, I think we, we nailed it on level one, um, as far as what's in level one. Level two, uh, what I see is important in that piece that actually could help us with a bond measure is actually the school resource officers, because, um, parents like the deputy mayor, my son, you know, all of us who have kids within this community want to keep our kids safe within schools. And that messaging right now in every community is hugely important on keeping kids safe. And so having a few officers that are in our schools and keeping our kids safe, that is a bit, we cannot pass that opportunity up. And that will help the messaging and making sure that we are being more proactive with our policing. You still working on that, Ted? Okay.
If, if, if you're, if you're ready.
Yes.
Now I have to be able to see it. Thirty-six million dollars, if you were to bond that over twenty years, that'd be about two point eight eight million dollars in debt payments per year, which would translate to about twenty-six cents per thousand or for a five hundred thousand dollar house, about a hundred and thirty dollars.
Hundred and thirty? Okay. I can do a hundred and thirty. I don't have a problem with that. But I'm me and I still have to think about those who, a hundred and thirty dollars. When we hear about, they can't afford phone bills and things like that, but with that said, we need to keep our public safe. So, um, I can't, I don't really know the, enough about the traffic officer and the K nine, but I do in, in package level two, the school resource officers, um, having those to me is, is extremely important. The aid car at Station Forty-Five, I'm, I'm a little, I mean, that's a nine, that's nine FTEs, is that correct? I, I tend to lean towards, uh, maybe finding some value there with what the deputy mayor said, seeing how we can work that, maybe half of that or whatever, because I, I do believe that having that swing shift is gonna be extremely important. The overtime that you mentioned, the forty thousand, I think is what you just came up with since January. I think that that pays for itself almost, if I'm not mistaken, um, on some of this other stuff. So if we go through a whole year, it could be as much as a hundred thousand. If we go to the, the last page, which is the navigator, the four patrol officers, dispatch supervisor, evidence technician. The evidence technician, I, that kind of goes hand in hand with the officers and, and everything you're doing internally. So I think that's hugely important, and I think we all talked about that last time. The dispatch supervisor, but four patrol officers. To me, those are important to make sure that we have funding for. And if the bond doesn't pass, we still need to make sure that we have funding for them, which includes the navigator because of how hugely successful that is. So I don't, uh, I don't know how we make sure that it's included, um, without, if we don't need to include it because we have other funding resources, but I would, I would hate to not have funding for it and have to make cuts later because we don't have, we haven't planned for it. Let's see, did I miss anything? The overtime reinstatement for fire, um, can you, can you explain that a little bit to me? Is that, is that, do we have to have that right now? Is that something we desperately need?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna include Ted on this one if I can.
Please.
As our Tammy.
Give me a second here. She's prepped me with some talking points.
The overtime reinstatement and the, um, asset replacement are both considerations for sort of the cost of business, um, particularly asset replacement, and so, um, finance, Ted has some information on that.
Councilmember McNeil, will you make a motion to extend the meeting while I go up the floor?
I make a motion to extend the meeting to nine-thirty.
I'll second that. Let's not discuss it. If you had all those in favors, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed? Passage unanimously. I think Councilmember Zorn?
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't see your hand.
So have I given enough direction on kind of where I'm, I'm at on things? Okay. I thank you.
Okay, as for the overtime, uh, if you recall in the two thousand seventeen budget amendment, we used overtime dollars to fund those over hires on both levels. And I believe the term that finance director used at the time is a bit of a science experiment. Let's see what it can do for us. What we're seeing, I think, is that nine-one-one calls are still requiring more time and backup officers. The two thousand eighteen act, what we took in, with the twenty-eight seventeen budget amendment is helpful, but it's not gonna eliminate the need for overtime altogether.
You, you said officers, is that? You said officers?
Oh, sorry, firefighters.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
All right, that's where I weigh in. So I'm, uh, I'm looking, I've been trying to get my head around the last page and then the level one piece, and I just want to make sure that, um, these things on the last page, we basically are gonna try to build into the budget, come, doesn't matter if the levy passes or not. And we're gonna, do I hear you right, that we're probably gonna need, need to take from other departments and other things to fund these things in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget?
I don't know because I haven't seen the revenues yet, and so I, I really don't know. I don't know where the expenditure requests are coming in from the departments. We're trying to do sort of a status quo budget, but status quo doesn't mean flat because there's just cost increases that, that we have to incorporate in the budget. So I don't know. I, I just don't know where the revenues are at this point, so I don't have an answer for you.
So I would like to see these things in the levy.
Yeah.
And then if the levy doesn't pass, these are the things that we're gonna take from other departments to fund. It's kind of what I thought we got out of the retreat, which I thought was a good, uh, that, I've never seen the chief the way you were that day, and it just woke me up. Like, I've been here seven years and I've never seen the emotional, um, feeling about these things. And so I, I don't want to take any gambles with any four of these things. I'd rather put it on the levy. If the levy fails, then we will cut other department budgets to make these happen. That's how I honestly feel. And then to add to that, though, so that's, I would take that. Can you do that with your little tool?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
I sure can. Let's see if this works again. I understood that to be the direction, that it was so important that with or without the levy, that that needed to be in the budget.
Right.
And so you, you could certainly add it to the levy and double up your, if, if that's what you wanted to do, but we were gonna find a way to make sure that that was covered in the, in, in the budget.
Sad just worry about that because I, I would be surprised if we had one point six million kind of floating in the other departments to be able to put into with the cost increases.
A couple of the items are, are not general fund, so they, they were looking for other revenue sources, like the navigator program. We're seeking grants and other sources. Um, the dispatch supervisor, there's some nine-one-one monies to carry us through for a couple of years. Um, so the whole thing doesn't need to be general funded. But that was what you dir- though, that was the point of that goal setting, was to give us your priorities. And if we have to cut other things to get to the point where we can afford those things, that was what I understood my direction to be.
Yeah, I still feel that same way, but I'd rather put it in the levy. And then it's a belt and suspenders approach that no matter what happens, these four items are gonna have, these are gonna be in our budget. But I'd rather put these on the levy as well.
Understand.
That's just me. But then keeping that in mind, then you look over at, oh, we'll have a number here soon. That number's gonna go up quite a bit for level one. So if I was looking at level one, chief, swing shift officers or a pro act team, not to make you gamble with this sort of thing, but which one would you prefer?
Wow, that's like Cax game, you know, that baby that gets split.
Which kid do you like?
Right, right. Right. You know, um, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna ask my operations commander to weigh in on that because, um, he's been trying to deal with the shift shortages and see which he feels would be the biggest bang for the buck because it's really, um, almost impossible for me to divide that.
Straw boat.
Yeah, there you go.
Did you do your calculation, Tori?
Yep, it's right here. So this is, this is adding in the four patrol officers and the evidence technician and software. To the city manager's point, I did remember the dispatch supervisor was from E nine-one-one fund, so it was not, um, general fund like those others were. This one does also include the navigator, which may have alternate sources of funding, but if you want to throw it all in, then these, the three of the four budget adds are now in the levy. So this is the pro act plus four patrol officers.
So this is the pro act plus four patrol officers, evidence technician, full-time aid car, not swing shift, navigator, and then probation lead, public safety application analyst, and the single school outreach and safety officer.
Which kid?
So I'm going to, I, I just said I'd say swing shift and I think you would concur.
I agree, yeah. If we, if we went with a pro act team and it was only pro act, I'd have to disband it on day one and put them into patrol. We just do not have the staffing. At the end of the month, I'm looking at a MPO running the ship with two officers and we just, that's not how we want to run staffing for the city. And that's with the traffic unit. And we just do not have the bodies and it's kind of getting to the point where I'm looking at not only what extras do we not do, but what calls do we not take anymore? That's where it's come down to for the operations.
So you prefer the, the, the swing shift over the pro acting?
Absolutely, yeah.
And I agree, the patrol's already in there, but I don't see it in your calculator. Am I blind?
Yep, second one.
I'm blind, okay, good.
I can zoom in a little and then, but then you can't see the staff and vehicles on the end. Okay. Would you like me to switch out swing?
That's right. So yeah, we'll take pro act out and swing shift in. And then the fires, I would, I'm not in support of adding the aid card of Station 45.
I don't think I've lost anything yet. So you'd like me to remove the full-time aid car?
Uh huh.
And let me just make sure these are still accurate. Nope, that's why it was so low.
All right. That's where I'm at. That's what I support. Deputy Mayor?
I really want that drug house closed down and it's not gonna happen without the pro act team. So I, I want, I want to add the pro act team in. I just, I, I can't imagine that we have a drug house and we know there's a drug house and we can't do anything about it. That just seems completely wrong to me.
Can I, can I offer you some, I talked to this, the school superintendent about the SROs just to make sure that we were communicating that the council was interested in this program. And she said one of the challenges that she has, so first of all, history has always been that we've shared 50/50. So we've budgeted it at 100%, but that's really going against this commitment that we've had with the school district for them to, to fund it with us. The challenge that she has is there's two other cities. And so there still needs to be a conversation with the school district to say, if we give you three additional school resource officers for Bothell Schools, she feels that the school board and she will, will be required then to add them to the other schools, so for Kenmore and for Woodinville. And those cities haven't committed to providing that. So it's, there's just some, some challenges for the school district to accept three full-time school resource officers. No, I, I thought you had three in there.
No.
Oh, you just had the one, I'm sorry.
There was, there was two line items. One of them, one was three officers and one was one officer.
I thought there was three, I'm sorry. It was put back in the other one. I just, anyway, helpful background, just supporting your decision.
That'd be one way to get Kenmore, Woodinville to do that, would be to have Bothell funding theirs.
It would. But I think even, even having the, the, the school outreach and safety officer will already put some of that pressure on them. If you have someone in Bothell going to those three schools, working with the, the middle schoolers, I think, I think that in itself would set a cutting edge trend to encourage Kenmore and Woodinville to follow suit.
I know we'll send mailers to all the residents of Kenmore, Woodinville of our police officers in the Bothell Schools. That'd be good. Okay, does anybody else want to take a swing at what?
Yes.
Their dream list is? There you go, councilmember McCollough.
Well, it isn't a dream list, but it, I, I really think there's some things that are really important that are important for our public to want to vote for a levy. And I think it's swing shifts. I think it's the pro act team. I honestly do not, I, I think, I, I won't put the navigator on this list because I'm hoping we can get that funding some other way. But when you, and then with the one school outreach officer moving from school to school, I assume they're going to go to the high schools, the middle schools, and even can do some elementary schoolwork because they're traveling. And so I like that. I'm, I like to keep the number down so that we don't get there too high. I like, you know, staying somewhere in the neighborhood of 36, 39, 40. But there are some things I think we should not, that we have to have in the levy. And that is the swing shift, the patrol officers, your aid car, I think that's critically important as well. And I don't know, I don't like doing a list like this. It frustrates me. I think it's all important.
Councilmember Reagan?
Well, I think you know what I'm gonna ask for. I, I think it's important that we, we realize that the fire calls have gone up about 25% in the past few years and yet staffing hasn't. So we're asking more of the firefighters out there. And, and I think we need to look at that. I, I'm not sure the numbers right now and somebody can correct me, but I know that 842 it's during some years during their transport fees have brought down about $300,000 to the city. So I think there's, there's some revenue that we can generate through an aid car. I, I like the swing shift officers, the four patrol officers. I, I think the navigator is essential. The school resource officer is important. But I think we need to definitely take a look at, at adding an aid car. We're gonna have to do it at some point in time. It's, it's gonna take us a while to get them. It's not like we can go out and find four nozzle heads or nine nozzle heads right at, you know, on the street corner. So that's where I, that's what I think.
At some point tonight, we're gonna have to get to a place on what we want to put in this levy. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. So can we add the, the pro, pro act team back in there and see what that looks like?
And then let me just check the formulas, seven through 15.
The reason why I like the, I guess the pro act, the swing shift, the four patrol officers, to me has, gives, gives a sense of commu, public safety. That's what it feels like to me. It feels like with the epidemic that we have going on right now, this to me feels, this is me speaking just personally, it feels like we're making a step to think to, towards the future of, if we don't do this now, we're constantly gonna be trying to catch up. This might not be the answer to the future because the epidemic comes to, it might even be bigger than what we think it's going to be or what it is today. But to me, I heard you loud and clear when you said that pro act team will give you the ability to get ahead of things so that it has less of an impact on the officers that are already there, the policing that you're already doing, which mean, to me means, if I'm not mistaken, that you can do more policing into the future.
We're starting, we're, we're doing smart policing.
I can actually speak to that. We had a, we have a house up in Holly Hills that we've had problems with for years. And in the past 60 days, I handpicked a few officers with overtime to address the problem. In that 60 days, mind you, this house, we've had 167 arrest contacts associated with this house. We've had over 1,500 people associated within this 20-block radius with criminal activity to this house that is also bleeding out into other jurisdictions. And it's clearly a problem. It's, it's one of those things I felt like I was chasing my tail on regularly because every call was huge. It's 1,000 pieces of mail that we have to go through, every one of them, and log into evidence. It's 500 credit cards. It's things like that that are just so time consuming. So with putting together this hodgepodge pro act team, in that 60 days, we've managed to get the homeowner, we put them on notice that we were going to do an abatement on the house if they didn't start doing something. We are going to try to seize your property and make it into a park. That's in essence what I told them. And, and with that, we got them on board. They, they're gonna be evicting the person out of there. They're going to literally crush the house and move it on out of there. Those are the type of things that we can do with a pro act team and we can do it in short order. The problem is we just don't have the ability with the lack of staffing to do those kind of things.
Thank you for that. The aid, the aid car, I still, I still go back, I mean, I, I know we have, definitely have a need for that, but I still go back to, is there another opportunity there for us?
But clearly it, there is. Unfortunately, I don't have prepared tonight to give you something like that, but I know, I feel confident we can come up with Plan B, there'd be less than nine employees that would help us out in that avenue.
So if we did what, if we did what's up there, I think, Tori, if you scroll down just a touch, I think, or up a touch, I think that we would be at 250 plus, I think the other one was 130 is what we, we heard.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I think that level one package that we've kind of pulled together is something that I would like to support. I think that really gets the police department where it needs to have its most effective, best chance for being successful and having the officers on duty and keeping that minimum staffing level and being able to do those extra type of enforcement actions and being effective. So I think having those three pieces for the police is very important. Bringing the navigator into this piece so that we give it the best chance of being funded through this, some other funding mechanism or worst case, we have to bring it into the budget system somehow. And then I think the so-so officer, being able to spread around the school district for Bothell and being able to impact the middle schools. I think this is, this strikes a good balance for everything and I'm good with this level one package.
Councilmember McCollough?
Thank you. And I just have one question of city manager. When would you actually know whether or not we could include in the budget the four patrol officers? I mean, you said you can't do it yet, but would you know prior to June, in June?
Not by June.
No. So it's, if we don't put it here, then we'd have, and, and, you know, I think it's, I think it's important that the public kind of sees this as more or less really public safety. And so when you talk about swing shift, I can talk about why that's needed. I like the restaurant example. And then for proactive, that's really important. People need to know that you are trying to prevent crimes from reoccurring and reoccurring. So, and I guess the four patrol officers, I'll go with that. I, I kind of like to see the aid car come back in some other option. So I think that it shouldn't be off the table. Navigator, I think, is critically important. You could talk to the public about these kind of things and they will support those kind of things. But I do have one concern and that's the dog. Do we really have to have a dog? We don't have that dog, is it? No, it's gone. Okay, good. That's it for me.
So councilmember McCollough, are you supportive of this package?
Yes. Yes, with the addition, I'd like to see the aid car come in on some level.
Why don't we have Tori put in maybe like 600,000 just as a placeholder? And then we can have, we can work with the chief and see what we could do with about 600,000. And then you could see the number with that.
And if I may, I think the public will really, really care about having an aid car. They understand our aging population and particularly in certain areas where we would be concerned about senior citizens and they'll, they'll, they will support having the aid car available for them.
So what will we get for 600,000 versus the 1.3 million?
I don't know. Some, some creative or just plugging the number, pretty much. We're plugging a number to see what we can, what we can back into. So it could come in at 750, it might come in at 660, 650, it could come in at 500,000. But this would be sort of a unique approach to adding some sort of staffing to enhance, enhance fire response. So that's why I'm just picking a, a number.
It ruins the whole 50 cents per thousand. Deputy Mayor?
So I was gonna say, I, I feel pretty strongly that 50 cents should be our limit. And so I think we should look at, at some of these things being in the budget. I think navigator's in the budget no matter what. There are several options for that. I also wonder about our chances of getting a grant if it's in, if it's paid for by a levy. Does that impact it at all?
We're gonna be looking for a grant now, so they're not gonna know that it's.
And, okay. So I would be interested in getting it down to 50. If there's, if there are a couple of things that we could pay for from our budget that would make it 50 cents, that would be really important to me. I just, I just think the tax, what's it called, tax fatigue? Tax fatigue is real. And I, I think this is a really good package, but I want it to pass. And I think 50 cents is, is kind of an important threshold number. So that would be my feedback, particularly when we're adding, I can't remember what it was for the capital. 30, was it 30, 26 cents? Okay. Yeah.
I think that's super feedback. I think we can, we can work with that and come back to you with something that's in the 49 cents, 50 cent range.
And I would be interested to know if those fire impact fees we're now charging would help pay for maybe that aid car or, I, I don't know at what level we're, we're getting fire impact fees. No, the fire, the, the aid car is capital.
Impact fees can only be used for capital?
No, equipment's capital, isn't it? Because it's an expansion.
Oh, we're pressing Ted here. He's filling in.
That was my understanding when we passed the fire impact fee, that if it, if you're, if it's a capacity thing, equipment can go, can go on or can be funded with fire impact fees.
That's something we want to come back to you with, I think, because I know, I know it's pretty restrictive.
I'd be interested because when we voted on, I was pretty sure that, that was what the, the deal was. And this is definitely an expansion, so.
You mean to take the cap, to take the equipment out of the calculation for the?
I don't know. I'm just wondering, I don't know what our fire impact fees, I don't know what we're collecting or if that's even a possibility, but it's just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody want to chime in that hasn't chimed in? We only got 10 more minutes. Councilmember Zorn's?
I just want to do a shout out for K-9. It's a real important tool in police work. And if we adjust and we fall below 50%, I think the argument for staying at 50 cents is a very valid one. And if we do adjustment and we could fit a K-9 dog in there for tracking, he would earn his, he or she would earn their weight in gold. So that's, that's the only tweaking that I would, if wishes were fishes, I would love to see K-9 back in there.
Do you have what you need? Great. Is there a motion adjourned?
Second.
All right, it's moved by councilwoman McNeil, seconded by a whole bunch of people. Let's say, councilmember McCollough, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Aye, we're adjourned. Aye, we're adjourned.